Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 1st, 2021 Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to open with a prayer from the Reverend David Fryer, who is with All Saints Episcopal Church here in Southern Shores. As we bring our prayer this morning, let us take a moment in silence to remember the people who have died in this pandemic, remembering especially those who were our fellow residents of Dare County, a moment of silence. As we gather in prayer remembering the fallen, may we also ask that God be with the Commission during these very challenging times. We are gathered here today to do the work of governing, the challenge of bringing together this wonderful diverse community to place where we can all comfortably live and grow. Today, be with those who have been elected to serve our community as its governors. Keep them mindful of the task of unifying, caring, and nurturing each of our fellow citizens. Be with them in their deliberations, give them ears to hear clearly, minds to think clearly, and a spirit of service dedicated to the common good. Finally, we give thanks for their leadership in the COVID-19 response, with particular thanks for the workers in the Health Department who have worked so diligently through this pandemic. They have been knowledgeable about the virus and its impact on the community, and they have communicated effectively to everyone in the county, allowing residents to respond effectively to the illness. They are now efficiently and effectively inoculating the community to ensure the long suppression of this virus. In the days ahead, we ask for your blessing, that your spirit be upon us, that we may well all serve the common good. We ask this in your name. Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County Manager?
Yes, sir, Chairman. Item 1 on the agenda is the Chairman's remarks.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. I just have a couple of brief items this morning to go over. First, I'd like to thank everyone who tuned in last week. The Avon Beach Nourishment Virtual Meeting was held on Wednesday, the 24th, at 6:00 PM. And our Board of Commissioners was here listening and taking in all the questions that were asked. The County Manager did a great job explaining the process. He gave the history of nourishment. He talked about the Avon Project and the reasons for looking into this and doing that. And we had quite a few people online, and I believe it was pushing 50 questions or more, even at the end of the meeting. So I want to thank the community, especially those residents in Avon who tuned in and listened to the presentation and asked questions. We will be looking into this. We continue to welcome any input that the citizens have, and the Board will be addressing this in the near future. Second item, the Board met also on February 18th with Representative Murphy, and he brought along with him First District Congressman Whitman from Virginia, who came along with him. And we met, we met for some two hours, and the Board had a great meeting with him and expressed some of the concerns that we're facing in the county. And we're very fortunate that Representative Murphy's been here numerous times already, doing a great job, and he wants to help us any way he possibly can, and he's certainly doing that. As a matter of fact, he will be back in town, I believe, this coming Friday, meeting with the home builders, and so I've been invited to meet with him then as well. So he's working hard on the county's behalf. That's all I have this morning, County Manager.
Chairman, item 2 on the agenda is with regard to Dare Home and Health and Hospice. We've had several meetings where we've talked about this. A couple of meetings ago, you all passed a resolution, the purpose of which was to allow us to have someone look at this and determine what the value was, so that we could decide how to resolve some of the issues that we have there in the future. The second step in this process is to have a public hearing to hear from the public about this. When this public hearing is completed in just a second, that will allow us to have our consultants put this out there to entities that may wish to take a look and purchase to give us some pricing information. And when we have that information, we'll bring that back to you, so that you can consider it, along with whatever other options we have with regard to our home health and hospice. So with that said, we would open the public hearing, and now's the time it's been set aside for that public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak can, and we'll wait a few minutes to see what we get, if With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public hearing, and we would move on to public comment. There is no action for you to take on that.
Please.
We'll move on, and we'll advise our consultants that we've had the public hearing, and they can move to the next step. Item 3 on the agenda is public comment, and again, we'll save some time here to see if we receive any public comment.
Okay.
We'd move on to item 4. Item 4 is the presentation of the county service pins, and I think we have a video for that. Today, I'm pleased to recognize and honor an employee who's been an incredible asset to Dare County over the last 10 years. Gina Dixon was originally hired by the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services in 2011. She worked in the mobile dental van with the Miles of Smiles program. While she was previously certified as an EMT, her certification had expired. Gina decided to return to school and become recertified as an EMT. After volunteering thousands of hours with Dare County EMS, she accepted a full-time position with the department and transferred from the Department of Health and Human Services in May of 2012. Gina has also obtained her advanced EMT certification. Gina assists with the orientation training of new personnel as a field training officer. She has received numerous accolades and compliments from patients and their families. Gina constantly seeks out additional projects around the EMS station, and she is a master at organizing anything. She is quick to help other staff members and is a tremendous asset to the department. Congratulations, Gina, and thank you for 10 years of dedicated service to the residents and visitors of our Dare County community. Chairman, that brings us to item 5 on the agenda, and this is a report from Dave Peterson at Trillium Health Resources.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And so I think Matt has the presentation set up for you. And Matt, is that on the screen? Do you all have the presentation in front of you?
We do, Dave.
Okay, great. So first, thank you for having me here today. I want to first thank Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Ross for serving on our Trillium Regional Advisory Board. They've been very helpful over the years in developing who we are today. I do want to just mention, this is my seventh year doing this, and there's been a lot of changes. And so I'm going to go into a lot of the changes that are currently happening. So, next slide. Oh, just on these updates, I want to just show who we are, what the Medicaid transformation changes have been happening, the organizational changes dealing with our call center and contracts and care management, and some of our COVID-19 responses, and then at the end, some Dare County data. Next slide, please. So just briefly, just our numbers. We serve 26 counties, which is a total population of about 1.5 million. We have 266,000 Medicaid-eligible individuals, and we serve of those folks about 58,000 individuals. Seventy percent of those are individuals with mental health needs, 20% with substance use disorder, and 10% with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the way we do that is we contract that out with approximately 500 provider agencies. The cost of that is, for those services, last year was almost $476 million. We serve the smallest county in the state, Terrell County, right next door to you all, but also our largest county is New Hanover County, which is the eighth-largest county in the state. And we cover about 12,000 square miles. Next slide, please. As you can see on this map, we have a northern region that has 10 counties, a central region which has nine counties, including Dare County, and in the southern region, seven counties. The population is interesting, if you just take a look at that, with the 10 counties in the north being about 200,000, but in the southern region, seven counties, and it's 772,000 people, with three counties less than what's up in the north. So just wanted to point that out. Next slide, please. So this is the big change that's been happening. And in 2018, I was in front of you all to kind of plant the seed of where the state was going in regards to Medicaid transformation. And each year since then, I've been giving you snippets of the updates. Well, we went into a lot more detail with our Regional Advisory Board and our Governing Board this past year to go in a lot more detail of what this means, but I want to make sure that you all are getting that information in a broader view. You'll hear the term "standard plans," and basically, the state has contracted now, through an RFP process, five private insurance companies, Omera Health, Caritas, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health. Currently today, we manage, Trillium manages, the mild, moderate, and severe individuals with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services. Starting July 1, we, Trillium, will no longer be managing the mild-to-moderate Medicaid individuals. That's a big shift. So a lot of the individuals that we currently serve, and when I say a lot, about 70% to 80% of the individuals that we serve today, these private insurance companies are now going to be managing them. Next slide, please. So on this map, this is the map for the standard plans that the state has put out there, and you'll see there's six regions. All of those insurance companies I previously mentioned will cover the entire state except for Carolina Complete Health, and they'll cover regions 3, 4, and 5. Next slide, please. So on this, what the standard plans will be doing in their timeline that the state has set up, this month, starting on March 15th through May 14th, they are going to have an open enrollment. And I, one of the biggest messages of this is there's a lot of people on Medicaid, and they're now going to have a choice, if they are low-to-moderate needs individuals, they're going to have a choice of those five insurance plans. And I think it is every individual in every county to educate those Medicaid-eligible individuals of those plans. And so the more messaging that can get out there about the choices that they have, the better. Their enrollment, that auto-enrollment, will begin then May 15th. So if Dave Peterson did not choose one of those five plans in between May 15th and March 15th and May 14th, then I will get auto-enrolled into one of them. So on July 1, the insurance companies will then start managing those individuals. Okay?
Dave, can I interrupt?
Yes.
It's Bob Woodard. Can you define low-to-moderate needs?
Good question, Commissioner. Thank you. So if I am just needing a monthly prescription for depression, let's say, that's a low need. If I am needing just some basic outpatient therapy, that's a low, mental health therapy, that's a low need, okay? And so the individuals that are in that category, like I said, it's about 70% to 80% of the individuals that we serve today.
Wow.
A moderate need may be an individual that needs weekly outpatient therapy and some medication management, all right? And then the high-needs individuals are those individuals that need more therapeutic interventions, like either, and I'll use one example, of a teenager that is having some major substance abuse issues and major mental health issues, and they need somebody to come into their home to do some therapy in their home, and then how they're managing their day-to-day activities because they're also in trouble with the law and that sort of thing. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for doing it.
Okay.
Dave, I got one question for you before we move on. With these different Medicaid plans, is there going to be someone who can advise these people which plan might be better for them?
Yes. So the state has set up two types of services, and one's called an embudsman program, where they can help guide the individuals. And so those, and there's another program that the state has set up, that basically, the difficulty with that issue, though, is they can't advise the individual to say, "This plan is better for you than the other plan." What they can say to you is, "Let me roll out all the specifics of this plan and the other four, and you have to choose." They can't say to you, "This plan would be better for you."
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave?
Next slide, please.
Dave, before we go, Dave?
Yep.
This is Rob Ross. Just a quick question. If you could clarify for our board members here, you did say that roughly 75%, I think it was 70% to 80% of current cases are standard plan and would move to the five private companies previously listed. That would leave Trillium with only 25% of their current cases. Could you take just a moment and explain why that will still require substantial effort on Trillium's part?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. So that, when we move to the, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about that later in the presentation, but when we move into just serving the high-need individuals, they are also, as you can probably guess, the highest-cost individuals. And we get paid on a per-member-per-month, and if you give the average of, right now, how it's set up, we have low, moderate, and high-cost individuals, and I'm just going to throw an easy number out to you, right now, let's just say that average between the low to moderate to high is $50 per member per month. And that's not an accurate number, but I'm just making it easy. When we only are going to be managing the high-cost individuals, that per-member-per-month is going to go up to $150 a month, per se. But at the same time, we are going to now be managing the whole person. And what I mean by that, right now, we only serve their mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services. But when we go live as a tailored plan, and I'll explain that a little bit later, is we are then going to be serving the whole person. In other words, their physical health also. And what that cost is, is going to be even higher on our per-member-per-month. So we're going to have to be contracting with all the physical health side of the house, in other words, all the primary care doctors, all the RNs that do that type of work, and all the pharmacies that do the prescriptions. And so that being said, the number of contracts, I mentioned earlier, we have 500 now, we're going to have thousands and thousands of contracts with all the primary care doctors and all the pharmacies in our 26 counties. Does that help, Commissioner Ross?
It does, Dave. Thank you. Because again, to the perhaps uninformed listener, scaling back an operation by 75% would imply, oh, well, this is going to be a much smaller, much easier organization and function to manage and deliver services. But given all that you've said, I do not think that's going to be the case. There will be a very lengthy and rather complex series of physical and mental services provided for the patients and clients that we serve.
Thank you. Yes. So I can't see the slides, but I think right in front of you, it says that they're currently, with the tailored plan, it has five to seven managed care organizations, and Trillium is one of those five, seven right now. And I will say, Commissioner Langley from Beaufort County and Commissioner Overman, last year, were asked to serve as Trillium's representative at the state North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting to see how they would like to divide up the state. And I believe that group said, "Let's leave the state exactly how it is with the seven managed care organizations." So when we, and so the map basically says, and I'll go to that one next, but not yet, we are going to be managing the high-risk individuals. The state let the RFP out on November 13th, and we'll be managing the whole person. Next slide, please. So this is the map of the tailored plans today as it is. You know, you can see we have the 26 counties, all on the eastern part of the state, and that has not changed. So next slide, please. So the applications were due back to the state on February 2nd. We submitted ours on February 1st. Our application was 2,231 pages, and we had to send something like 15 copies of that in. And just to show you how concerned we were of making sure it got there, our attorney drove the application from Greenville to Raleigh to drop it off, and if his car broke down, I was the backup driver to come pick him up and make sure that application got into Raleigh. So 20 boxes full of the application up to the state. Yes, 20 boxes, yes. So on June 11th, the state will be announcing the, who the awardees are of that, and they can choose five of us, six of us, or keep it the same with all seven. There's a part of the application that we're working on right now, and what they're calling "empty regions." If the state does not choose all seven, and they choose six or five, and I'm sure we'll be chosen as one of those five, six, or seven, that those counties that are going to be empty by an MCO that didn't get selected, possibly not get selected, then the state can divide those counties up into the ones that did get awarded on June 11th.
Dave, this is Wall. Excuse me. Do those counties still have to be contiguous?
No, they do not. No, they do not. So, good question. We will then have a readiness review sometime in the fall or winter from the state, saying that we're ready to become a tailored plan. And then July 1, 2022, we will then be serving the whole person with, along with their behavioral health, substance abuse, and developmental disabilities, like we do today. Next slide, please. So like I've said, we're going to be managing the whole person, both behavioral and physical health. We're also going to be focusing quite a bit on the social determinants of health, which are housing, transportation, food insecurities, employment, and personal safety. So like I mentioned earlier, we're going to have to be also contracting with every single pharmacy in the 26 counties, which is 2,100 pharmacies that we have to contract with, okay? We're also going to have to be contracting with every primary care physician that provides Medicaid services. And there's a couple of thousands of them in our 26 counties. So our contracts department is going to be very, very, very busy. We're also going to have to be providing tailored care management for the next couple of years during this process, all right? Which we currently do, but it's got a different tone to it, which the state has different requirements. Next slide, please.
Hey, Dave, Ervin Bayner.
Some of our organizational changes are, what's required in the contract is to have various call lines. Like right now, we have a call center, and if it's a business call, there's a certain number, but if it's a consumer client call that needs services, that's a separate number. Well, the state is adding a couple additional numbers that we have to have for our call center. We have to have a single line for all of our pharmacies. We have to have a single line for all of our providers out there. We have to have a nurse line and our current call center for helping individuals that need services. So as you can see, getting back to the question of, you know, are we going to get any smaller? No, we're going to have to increase our number in call center also. Our contracts, like I mentioned, are going to go way up because we're going to be dealing with pharmacies and primary care offices. And then we're also going to be doing the care management of the whole person. Back in the 80s and 90s, when I was working in this system, there was a class action lawsuit at there was a class action lawsuit at the state called the Thomas S. lawsuit. And in that lawsuit, we were required to serve the entire person. So I'm, I'm bringing back old memories of, yes, we, we used to serve the individuals for the whole person, including their physical health. Next slide, please. Yes?
Urban Bateman here. Um, just a quick question. So, back to the pharmacies. In conversation with a neighbor, they, they switched their provider for his prescriptions was concerned from one to another. And one prescription they had cost them twenty-six dollars a month for inhaler. And with the company they switched to inadvertently was not covered by that prescription. And so the, the price of it went to four hundred and some dollars. When these folks go to these five companies, are those companies going to be, have the ability to or to not pay for certain prescriptions? Because I can see someone on Medicaid who hasn't got the money for insurance anyway is going to be out there scrambling because that inhaler that was twenty-six is now going to be four hundred and some dollars.
Have you seen the formulary that they provide with these on prescription drug coverage? It's like, uh, the phone book for Manhattan. If you try to read through a formulary, it's very, very difficult.
I know. And, but I can just, so my, the question is, is this going to be a one company better than the other, or are they all going to have the same standard amount of money that they're going to pay for certain prescriptions?
Yeah, so Commissioner, that's a really, really good question in the sense of, the state would probably know better about that answer because the state is the one that's managing those five insurance companies. And we have not been able to get access, and I, I can understand why, what, what the state's contracts are with those five private insurance companies. We, we don't, we can't see what that is. And so, um, you know, to, to be real blunt, uh, I don't know what the cost is going to be. I'm hoping with Medicaid, um, there are these federal guidelines that basically say you have to stick with those guidelines to make sure the rates are feasible for folks. And so, um, I, I don't know whether the difference between AmeriHealth, uh, of prescription for antidepressants would be the same as Blue Cross's, um, prescription for Medicaid for depression. I don't know if there's going to be a difference in that.
Dave, is that something the Ombudsman could help with?
Um. Yes, probably, uh, now that I think about it, yes, they could probably help with trying to get that answer for folks. Yeah. But I, but I also would say that, um, you know, I can go back and try to find out how to go get that answer. I don't know if I would actually get, for this prescription, it's going to cost you this much versus this, uh, in this company. But I can try to find out how you can get that answer.
Thank you, Dave.
So, the impact today for the services that, uh, Trillium is doing right today, they're not going to be changing, but July one, they will be changing. They, we, they still have, and let me give you an example. If an individual is receiving a service called intensive in-home, and it's a state Medicaid definition under Trillium, and then the, well, let me use a different one, uh, just outpatient services, which is a, is a definition that we currently fund for, with Medicaid dollars. That service definition will remain the same when it goes over to the five insurance companies. Okay? So the service definitions won't change. We're going to be moving forward with a lot of infrastructure changes. But we're also going to be working towards the contracting with pharmacies and primary care folks. Any questions about that? Because the next slide goes into our COVID nineteen. Okay. So, next slide is the COVID nineteen impact. So Trillium has a separate website set up just for COVID nineteen questions. We have done extensive, and just another announcement came out today. We're continuing to extend our rate increases anywhere from five to thirty percent. Best way to make sure that we're managing the consumers appropriately is if we're managing the providers appropriately by trying to keep them afloat. And so, we started rate increases back in March, um, of last year and have continued to uphold those throughout, uh, the year. We have done waiver, uh, waiving of pri- prior authorization so that people can get into services much quicker. We have supplied, um, COVID nineteen kits to many of our providers and consumers. And these are kits that have, you know, the hand wipes, the sprays, the masks, um, all different kinds, um, that we've given out to our providers. We've increased, um, uh, thir- up to thirty hours for respite for kids with developmental disabilities. We continue to try to promote telehealth, uh, and so, uh, which is really nice to have ECU being one of the big, um, uh, supporters of that. And, and you all know that because you have one of your, uh, primary care docs, uh, offices in Dare County doing that telehealth. We've also done, um, food delivery to folks that are in need of, um, some meals. Next slide, please. We're promoting the Hope for NC, which is a statewide, um, process to help folks with their mental health. And it used to be just in the Trillium area, but since COVID hit, um, it's gone statewide. We do have the Hope program that's addressing some of the housing issues out there. Internally, Trillium still remains, um, our offices can only have about fifteen percent of our staff in the offices. So these, uh, remote presentations are a, a new learning curve for some of us. We do have, uh, access to care, um, be, for, you know, our, that access to care line is open twenty-four seven. Right? So if you're wanting any other information, there's a web link right there.
Dave.
So very quickly, some project updates.
Dave.
We've had.
This is Wall again. Just another question, please.
Yeah.
Uh, you were talking about, I know that Trillium has, has given rate increases, uh, to some people. But there was some discussion a while back about whether or not the insurance companies were going to give rate increases, uh, specifically to mobile crisis. Uh, you know, because of our geography, I know that Trillium has always given a, uh, kind of a higher rate. Uh, but on, on folks on standard, on the standard plan, are the insurance companies doing the same thing? Or have you gotten any feedback at all on that?
So I haven't had gotten specifics, but what I have heard is that the insurance companies are, um, taking a look at that and, uh, have been fairly open to that. That was the last word I heard, is that they've been open to giving those higher rates.
Thank you.
Yep. So, project updates, um, so if you're on that slide, we've had some Department of Social Services respite homes opening up, and those are good for fourteen days. Um, we've given out, um, twelve hundred naloxone kits, and Dare County, um, also received some of those kits. Uh, like I said, we did the Co- uh, COVID kits. The rate increases, we put in, um, and I'm not sure if we have it in your Dare County one yet, but we've also put in the hand sanitizer stations at the, of the playgrounds that we put in a couple of years ago. Um, we've had several, uh, both internal and external racial equity projects. We did the Safe Schools Healthy Kids Project, which is an online training, um, for bullying and depression and substance abuse. And so, uh, many of the school systems have been tapping into that. And we also have developed this past year a crisis and disaster response department because after four or five years of hurricanes coming in and the energy that we've had to take from internal staff to, to address that, we've, uh, developed a couple of FTEs to support that. Next slide. So this is the last one, um, that I just, for Dare County. We had, um, total number served one thousand sixty-nine individuals, uh, seven hundred and thirty-four. We had a primary diagnosis of mental health, two hundred and eighty-five with substance use, and ninety-eight with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And like I always say, those numbers don't add up because, uh, people have, uh, dual diagnosis. Some have primary, uh, mental health along with substance abuse issues, so. And the last slide is just any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Any of the board members have any other questions for them?
Well, thank you, Dave. It's, um, appreciate all the info and the update and everything. I know you will, um, come July, you have quite a bit more challenges, uh, ahead of you. Doing that whole, whole health care, so. But, um.
Yes, and I, and I've offered other commissioners, uh, county commissioners, um, at those meetings. If anybody has, wants to go over this, uh, in more detail, I'd be happy to meet with anyone individually on this also.
Well, thank you for offering to do that, Dave. Really appreciate it. Thank you again for your time this morning.
Thank you. Take care.
Yes, sir. County manager?
Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. Uh, this is a planning recommendations from the Dare County Waterways. Brent Johnson, our program manager is here. And I think Steve Koltz, the creature is here with him. He's on, serves on that commission as well. And I'll turn it over to you, Brent.
Good morning, Brent.
Morning, gentlemen. How are you today?
Fine, thank you.
Get the slides going. So this is the agenda for today. So I'll, I'll briefly talk about the dredge material management plan that we're currently working on with Coast Protection Engineering, Ken Wilson's team. Uh, then going to our, uh, our waterways overview just to give everybody a better understanding of, uh, the current state of our waterways. And then, uh, planning recommendations and questions. Really, at the end, the planning recommendations are, are, are for me to receive feedback from the board as far as staff actions that I can continue moving forward with. So dredge material management plan, uh, this is in preparation for the Core's pipeline contract, which is scheduled, uh, to be funded in FY twenty twenty-two, so this, uh, October. With, with the project actually occurring in October of twenty, um, of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, so a year and a half from now. Uh, the Core has addressed concerns with capacity issues down in Hatteras, and then also up here, um, in, in Wanche's channels A, B, and C as far as placement of material. And as the local sponsor, we are responsible, uh, in conjunction with the state to provide those material placement, uh, areas. Uh, final report from Coast Protection Engineering. We're, we're hoping to have everything wrapped up and, and briefed to you next meeting. This is kind of a precursor, um, to that, uh, to that presentation as well. So going into the, the actual channels themselves, uh, this is Manial, Shalabag Bay, one through thirteen. Uh, this is a federally authorized channel, but it is not federally funded. There's not a lot of things on paper, uh, of why it's not federally funded.
Imagine that.
Feedback I get from the Core is that when they built the seafood, uh, seafood park in Wanche's, that it was agreed upon that the state would take over, uh, maintenance going from Wanche's north, um, past Pirates Cove and Manial. Like I said, but there is nothing that, that, that kind of shows that the state has continuously provided funds that, that do support that. Ranges one through four, the last project we had, uh, with a pipeline contract was in two thousand. Uh, we're, there's not a lot of data from that as, as well from the Core. And then in two thousand five, two thousand six, they did fund, um, ranges ten through five. And that was a two point five million project. And then currently, we are looking at, or we are currently in the process of, of doing ranges one through four right now. And then, um, and that ends up being about a two point one million project, but that ended up only doing, um, fifty feet wide by nine feet deep, not the actual federal authorization. And what, what you can see here is the actual, um, the actual surveys themselves. And just to give you an idea of, of what they are, what they mean. Maroon is less than four feet, red is four to six feet, orange is six to seven feet, yellow is seven to eight, light green is eight to ten, green is ten to twelve, and anything blue is greater than twelve. It is estimated right now that if, if we were to work with the state, uh, that a, a, and jump on the Core pipeline contract, it'd be about a three million dollar project to get everything da- down to the actual federal authorization. Really to get everything blue, uh, what you see here. Wanche's four A, four B, or fourteen A, fourteen B, and fourteen C. So this is federally maintained, uh, and follows under the Manial Shalabag authorization. It authorized for twelve feet plus two feet of overdredge. And, uh, historically, placement of material has gone into Island H. This is where the concern from the Core came, is that, that as of right now, they can only dredge down to twelve feet, uh, as far as the limitations with the placement in Island H. In order to go to the fourteen feet, uh, we would need to find additional placement for about forty thousand cubic, cubic yards. Core pipeline contract, uh, two thousand five, two thousand six, uh, is about three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to do this. Uh, in two se- twenty seventeen, it was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this. We have, Dare County has performed emergency, emergency dredging, uh, after hurricanes. Matthew is, is four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we used a Golden Leaf grant, um, Golden Leaf Foundation grant in order to fund that. And then after Dorian, uh, we, we spent about three hundred thousand dollars to, to clear up any shoaling that, 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 um, occurred after, uh, or due to the storm. And really, the, the, the shoaling that historically happens is really up at that intersection. And it comes in from the north, uh, the top of the page, and comes down and, and blocks in the channel itself. So this is where we get into kind of the, the Oregon inlet complex. You have, um, ranges fourteen through seventeen going from Wanche's south. Uh, and that connects into Old House Channel, one and two. Uh, and then you, at Hell's Gate, which is the intersection, uh, going east, the, the one on the bottom. Uh, that's what connects you, uh, from the federal authorization into Oregon inlet. And then you have Oregon inlet going out. And then diving in a little deeper. So the federal channels are, are fourteen through seventeen, Old House Channel, uh, Hell's Gate to Bath Night Bridge or, um, um, or the actual Oregon inlet, and then the Oregon inlet bar. Non-federal channels, at the top, you see Walter Slough. Uh, and then you have the Oregon inlet cut, uh, which is known locally as the crack. Uh, the Coast Guard recently, uh, in the last six months officially named it the Oregon inlet cut. Uh, but everyone knows it as, as the crack. So this, this survey here, uh, the least for west of the bridge and the bar itself is slightly outdated by about three months, uh, as the, the Core updates every, roughly about every two weeks. What you, what you see is that, with, with this is really the understanding that, that we have authorized, or we provided, the county has provided, um, up to three million dollars of, of, of funds in order to dredge this and to keep this, this complex open. And that's a state match for the shout draft navigation, uh, where currently we get about six million dollars, or have the ability to get up to six million dollars from that. Walter Slough, uh, has been funded by the Coast Guard since two thousand ten. They currently own the permit, uh, and they do plan on, um, tagging on with the Core's pipeline contract next year, uh, in order to, uh, to dredge that as well. The Oregon inlet cut, or, or, or the crack, uh, just for everyone's knowledge, it was attempted in, in two thousand four to get that federally, um, maintained under a, uh, private-public, or public-private-public partnership agreement with the Core. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, the county and the Core couldn't just figure out the lang- the, uh, the language in the legal agreement to, to move forward with it. Then you move on to Rodanthe, uh, ranges one through three. This is NC DOT's emergency ferry route. It is federally authorized, but it has not been federally funded in over twenty years. Uh, DOT does run, um, quarterly, uh, at least, that is their, their enforcing plan now is to run quarterly just to ensure that they can get their ferries in and out of there. And I actually think they were supposed to run it last week. Uh, and so we'll get an update from them to see if, if everything's still clear. Previously, we have looked at funding it, um, in combination with the Core, and it, it. Previously, we have looked at funding it in combination with the Core, and it hasn't been done in some time, but the, the assets they've used have not been under the, an actual pipeline contract or a private dredge. It's been with government plant, either the Merit, which is side cast, or the Snell, which is no longer really on the East Coast, it's down in Texas, and doesn't plan on being back for three to four years, due to the amount of work it has down there. And then you have Avon ranges 1 through 3, so this is a federal channel, but this, once again, has not been federally funded in over 20 years. This, this channel is unique because it, it provides no public access. There is, the harbor itself has, is all owned by private landowners, and there is a, a private boat ramp there, paid to use, but other than that, it is all private land. Stumpy Point. So Stumpy Point is part of the emergency ferries emergency route. You can see on the picture on the right where the ferry channel goes north from the federal channel into their docks. The actual channel themselves, they, they have not been dredged, or the, sorry, the basin and the marina has not been dredged by the Core in some time. A lot of it has to do with that you can't get a pipeline dredge in there, and so it needs a different technique, like a bucket and barge, like we're currently doing. In addition, the Core has said that there are issues with the, the sediment in the, in the basin, and it would have to go through an either an upland disposal site or into a location like the CND landfill, like we're doing with Manial. So this does have public access, or at least Stumpy Point does have public access. It's on the east side of, of the tip of the bay. It's not connected to the channel itself. And then we also do own, the county also owns some property there and dock space. And then there is a, recently, there is a, a new commercial fishing plant that was, that was constructed or really rebuilt in 2019, and it's insane seafood. So Hatters, Hatters Complex. So this has kind of been in, in your guys' light recently, especially with the federal realignment. As you can see on the right side of the, the diagram, that was kind of the original federal authorization, and that just had to do with Rollinson, and then getting people out to actually the Hatters Ocean Bar, and really the gorge. Currently, we are working with the Core to realign all, all this, and that was sent out early last week. The Core has public comment going on right now, and that is to include Barney Slough, Slough Channel, and South Ferry Channel into the actual Hatters Complex. And this does a lot of great things for the county, because it allows us to receive federal funds to maintain all that, which, which has not, which they have not been able to do, and it also allows us to have accurate surveys conducted, which is vital to our, our Mariners. Slough Channel, right now, the, the DOT is in the process of getting a permit, because we, the, the federal realignment is going to take nine to 12 months before they can actually go out there and dredge. The Core can go out there and dredge, and so the state is working, the ferry division is working to get a permit for Slough Channel, to ensure that does not close off, because that, that would be a big hit, not just to our Hatters Mariners, but also a big hit to Hyde County and the people of Orkocoke. Barney Slough, no permits are currently held by anyone, but the Core is working on getting those, and as I mentioned, the Hatters realignment. So planning recommendations, as I mentioned, these are, these are just recommendations from the Waterways Commission. Back in December, we started a working group with the Waterways Commission, with volunteers to kind of get an idea, separate from our meetings, to really, really hone down and see what, what issues you have, and what, what we can do to try to correct or fix those issues, and a way forward for the waterways of Dare County. So I'll go into these more detail as I, as we move forward the slideshow. So the first one is to obtain Dare County permits to dredge Rollinson Channel, Hatters, Barney Slough, Slough Channel, and South Ferry Channel, and the Hatters Bar, utilizing the state private-public partnership dredge. This is, this is the name that we, the PPP dredge is what we named it so far, and that is the dredge being billed by EJE dredging. This, this is actually currently being done in the dredge material management permit project, which the, the board commissioners funded back of February of last year, and the process that, that Ken Wilson's team is going through. This will allow us to get permits to dredge this entire channel with, with, with the state private-public, private partnership dredge. There is additional cost from what it was in February, and that is the cost to do sediment samples of the Hatters Bar, because we just have to verify what the sand is like, so see where we can place it. And if you saw the, the public notice that went out yesterday, there are options of nearshore placement on Hatters to support beach nourishment, and also nearshore placement on Orkocoke to support beach nourishment as well. The second one, this is a formal request to add the Hatters Inlet Bar to the federal authorization under the Water Resource Reform and Development Act. This is under the 7001 process. This is where the local sponsors submit the formal request to the Core to change, and change an actual federal authorization. This is the only way that local sponsors have to, to change annual federal authorization. It is just the bureaucratic process that does have to start. It does require approval by Congress, and will require political support, political support state and federally in order to really get, get pushed through. We aren't anticipating this, this being any additional cost to Dare County or to the Core, but it does give us the ability to have surveys completed of the bar, which currently they only do about once a year now, and they, they only do it if we, they think or know that a shallow draft dredge is going to dredge South Ferry, so that it can go in and out of the bar for disposal. So this will provide repetitive surveys, just to provide an accurate picture for our Mariners, and the ability for the Core to actually dredge it in case of emergency, if it does shoal in. And then, third one is the update to the 2013 Hatters Economic Impact Study. And so this is really to consolidate the vast, numerous, different studies that are out there for Hatters. It is unbelievable how many things are honed in on Hatters, to include MPS, to include the Mariners, to include beach nourishment, the, the beach inlet management plan that the state did. It's, it's, it's quite amazing how much data actually exists. And really, the focus on what this would be is, is to, to look around beach nourishment and the benefits of our Hatters waterways. And this results, or this came up as a recommendation from me as a staff, staff officer, is that, is that when I did the, the Buxton Grant for beach nourishment, and I went through that process to see what, what data was out there, and what, what, what I could use, it was eye-opening how beneficial Hatters really is. Hatters as a whole, Rodanthe going south, in utilizing these different sources. And that was kind of a reason why we were able to get that additional $100,000 versus the other, other communities, because we had good data that supported the grant and the reasoning behind the grant. I have spoken with the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, and they have agreed to, to cost-share this grant as well, and so this would, this was inputted into my budget this, this, for the next fiscal year to move forward. And number four, this is a request from state legislation to fully fund the dredging of Wanchee's channels, 14 going north, for the upcoming Core's pipeline contract. So in this process, the Core is going to find out, hopefully, tentatively in April, if they receive funding for it, and then it will be authorized to use in October. And then, then, once they have funding, they can start the process to put out the, the actual dredge contract. So we have about a year to, to work with our, our legislators to see if there's the option available for the funding of it. If it is available, it'll be tagged on as an additional bid item under the dredge, under the Core's contract, which should go out spring of next year. As mentioned, it will require support, local stakeholders, kind of same process that the town of Manial went through in 2017, to do the, what, what we currently are doing now. This will just get enough funding for the Core's, for a pipeline contract, so that we can go down to the actual federal authorization of 12 feet deep, 100 feet wide for the entire channel. And last one, this is a request from the commissioners to support a resolution to, to submit to NCDOT, state and federal representatives, and the Core to stress the importance of the funding for continued maintenance of the Rodanthe Federal Channel and Emergency Ferry Route. This is, you know, the, the Waterways Commission knows that this is a federal channel, and it is an emergency ferry route, and the last, you know, we only know that we, we're going to need it when an emergency happens, and a lot of times, if, if we're not proactive with, with dredging, then emergencies, not only will the emergency of the, the storm or the need for the federal, for the ferry route will happen, but potentially the, the need for dredging the ferry route could happen, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
It's a matter of when, not if.
Correct. And so we're trying to just be proactive with that to, to stress that we want the ferry division to either tie in funding, or as an emergency budget, to look at this using the, the, their, their pipeline dredge, the Manial, which is fully capable of dredging in this channel, and utilizing our, our spoil site that the county has. And so, sorry, I lost my thoughts. So, so yeah, so we're just looking at, at being proactive and, and expressing the concerns that the, the Waterways Commission, the people of, of Hatters Island have with the emergency ferry route. Gentlemen, that's all I have pending any questions, and really a request from the board to continue the staff actions.
Thank you, Brent, for the detailed info there. Anybody have any questions, Brent?
Brent, you were asking for a resolution. Do you have one already ready to present?
I, I do not.
These are recommendations that he'll come back with.
I've got just a few things. One, in our two-hour meeting that we had with Congressman Murphy this past week, we did talk extensively about our dredging needs, especially about making Hatters Inlet a federal inlet and funding, and he's on board. What that means is, you know, we got a friend in Washington anyway on it. Also, the new dredge does have a name now, it's Miss Katie, so it doesn't have to be the PPP anymore. And thirdly, have you talked with the Coast Guard down there in Hatters about support for getting that whole complex, you know, realigned and turning it into a federal inlet, since it is a search and rescue base down there, and they have issues getting in and out also?
We have, and Lieutenant Akers, who is the sector chief out of Wilmington, who does the navigation for North Carolina, she has had conversations with supporting, providing a letter of support from the Coast Guard to add, one, the Hatters Bar to our federal authorization. The realignment is, unless some environmental issue comes up, the realignment is happening. It just won't include the bar, because that, we actually have to change the authorization, whereas they're working within the language of the current authorization to add Slough Channel, Barney Slough, and South Ferry.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, Brent?
Good presentation.
Yeah, very good, Brent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Creature.
Creature, do you, did you have something else you wanted to address this morning, Creature?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Just here to back the grid, in case y'all got rowdy.
County manager?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a proclamation for the 2021, as the 19th Annual March for Meals Month, and with your permission, I'll read that proclamation.
Yes, sir.
Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965, and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of older, of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregant and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. Whereas the 2021 observance of March Meals for Wheels celebrates 19 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregant and home-delivered in Dare County, have served our communities admirably for more than 20 years. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Dare County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at a significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also provide caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Dare County provide nutritious meals to seniors that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Dare County provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Dare County deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-19 pandemic, and will continue to provide to the local communities, our state, and our nation long after it is over. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as the 19th Annual March for Meals Month, and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals and Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2021 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. This is the first, first day of March 2021.
Move to approve. Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve, and it's been seconded by, who down here? Commissioner Bateman. Any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right, next is the consent agenda. On the consenting agenda, you have the approval of the minutes for February 16th, 2021. You have the Dare County Sanitation Budget Amendment. You have the Health and Human Services, Social Services, Crisis Intervention Program, and Low Income Energy Assistance Budget Amendment. You have the CARES Act, HIVA Elections Additional Grant Award. You have an audit contract for fiscal year 2021. You have the Government Education Access Channels 2021-22 Proposed Budget, and you have a Dare County Tourism Board Request Consent Expenditure from the Long-Term Unappropriated Line Item 4585.
Move to approve. There's a motion on the board by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Without Mr. Chairman, we move on to item nine. Those are your board appointments. On your board appointments, you have the Hatters Community Center Board. Ricky Shepherd has tendered her resignation, and the trustees recommend Jeff Oden to serve the remainder of her term.
Move to approve Jeff Oden. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then your upcoming board committee and appointments. In April, you have the Mans Harbor Marina Commission with four terms expiring. In May, you have the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction ETJ, Town of Nagseth, one term. The Veterans Advisory Council, two terms expiring. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, one term expiring. And then in June, you have a bunch. You have the College of the Albemarle Board of Trustees, one term expiring. You have the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction ETJ for the Town of Southern Shores, one term expiring. You have the Hatters Community Center Board with three terms expiring, and the JCPC with 16 terms expiring. The Land Transfer Tax Appeal Board with three terms expiring. The Dare Library Board with two terms expiring. The Mans Harbor Community Center Board with three terms expiring. The Roanoke Island Community Center Board with four terms expiring. The Rodanthe Wage Salvo Community Center Board with two terms expiring. The Transportation Advisory Board with one term expiring, and the Waterways Commission with three terms expiring. And that would be it. Hang on one second, I need. Hang on one second, I need... Can that be your agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 10, Commissioners Business and Managers Business. Vice Chairman, do you mind kicking it off this afternoon, this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be happy to. As was mentioned earlier, on Thursday, February 18, the Board met with Congressman Greg Murphy and Representative Whitman from Virginia, who coincidentally used to fish out of Oregon Inlet commercially, as I understand it. And we had a very good exchange on a number of items of concern for Dare County, which included dredging and stabilization of Oregon Inlet, Hatteras Inlet issues that we had discussed. We also discussed inland flooding issues as a result of some of this, and also fishing issues as it resulted to some of this, as well as the Alligator River Bridge replacement and potential funding to address that issue. As was stated earlier, we did have a very good discussion. I think we probably talked to him for a couple of hours on things, but everybody participated in that, and we had a, I think it was a good exchange of information. On Monday, February 22, County Manager Outen, Chuck Lissette, Director of Social Services, Commissioner Ross and I participated in a teleconference discussion with Trillium CEO Lisa Wainwright, and with Central Region Director Dave Peterson, whom you heard from earlier, as well as other central region counties, to discuss all of the services overseen by Trillium and the impacts that the Medicaid transformation will have. You saw some of that in Dave's presentation today, and three words come to mind when you go through this. It is interesting, it is involved, and it is terribly complicated. And we are fortunate to have Chuck Lissette and Sheila Davies to provide leadership in our Department of Health and Human Services as we move forward through this Medicaid transformation process. It is going to be, it is going to be quite something. I'd like to thank all of people who took part in the public meeting to discuss Avon Beach Nourishment. Thanks to all of you for your input and your ideas. And on Thursday, February 25, Commissioner Ross and I attended the local, worked local poster presentation given to three young men and women from Dare County who got their extended education in their various fields and returned to work in Dare County. There was one from each high school, including Matthew Burris Knuckles from Cape Hatteras Secondary School, Lisa Sabotic from Mania High School, and Kirsten Toronis Thistle from First Flight High School. Congratulations to you all, and thank you for staying in Dare County. I also like to say thanks to Gina Dixon for her 10 years of service to Dare County. We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ross and myself went swimming, polar plunge.
Is that what you call it?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We're still under psychiatric care.
You might have took a dip. I don't know about the swimming part.
We took a dip. It was cold. But it's for a good cause, for the Special Olympics, and it was my honor to do that. Like I said, it was cold, but it was for a good cause, and a lot of people out there are from different areas and so forth, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Bobby, I talked to a couple of folks this week who saw the presentation that we had on the Avon Public Hearing, and you did a superb job. They even complimented and so forth. And we all know how it is when you're in front of the camera, and you're answering questions, don't know what they're going to ask, and you handled it beautifully. And I just wanted to, I'm very proud of what you did, and it was very forthcoming, and sometimes the answers aren't what people want to hear, but if you're upfront and handle it the way you handle it, it goes ever good. The other thing is, I want to just tell everybody, if you have the opportunity, and we all will eventually get the shot for COVID. I have had a conversation with individual, and they're so adamant they're not going to do it and don't need it. That's how we're going to combat this dreaded virus we have out here, that and wearing a mask and doing what we're socially distancing and doing what we're supposed to do. But if you have the opportunity to get the shot, get it, so we can keep everybody safe. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Count?
I too want to thank the county staff and this Board as well, and certainly the County Manager for what was a really good presentation. It was, two hours went by pretty quick. I also want to commend the community for what was a civil discourse, and was appreciative of that, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin?
I just have a few things. The first is, we had a major house fire in Mans Harbor the other day, the other night, actually, it was about 4:15 in the morning when the alarm went off. It was a brand-new house that had not been occupied yet, but it was in the very final stages, and it literally burnt to the ground. The next morning, I went by there, I know a bunch of the people in the Fire Department, went by there to see how things were, and in our conversation, they mentioned to me that the community building in Mans Harbor has several roof leaks, and that if I could bring it up at our meeting and maybe get something done over there to help solve that issue. The other thing is, I'd just like to give a shout-out and congratulations to Kenneth Brown. Kenneth Brown brought in a 771-pound bluefin tuna the other day. It was quite a sight, and it really got a lot of people on the dock talking, and it was a good thing. That's all I've got.
I saw that post, Commissioner, and there was a 600-and-some pound laying on the deck.
On the dock behind it.
That was incredible.
It was, those two fish were the same length. They were both 107 inches long, and Kenneth's fish weighed 99 pounds more than the one that was on the dock behind it. It was a beautiful fish.
It was. I saw that post, it was incredible. Wow, thank you. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The water was 41 degrees. How do I know that? Because I asked Commissioner Bateman, and he confirmed it twice, which, again, I have not fully emerged from the psychiatric evaluation after that, but we're working towards success. We have a small task force that meets and has met irregularly due to the COVID-19 pandemic on the event site in Naggs Head and the future design and plans for the event site that incorporates Pamlico Jackson, the large open area there where we typically have the seafood festival. We've just begun meetings again. I don't really have much to offer in the way of status update, other than discussions and negotiations continue over what it should be, should it have a facility for events, conferences, trade shows, that sort of thing? Should there be sporting events? Should there be a hotel incorporated and tied into, connected to the event site? To do so would require significant cooperation and potential ordinance modifications by the Town of Naggs Head, specifically to deal with wastewater and parking regulations currently in the ordinances, and we continue to debate and discuss those issues. Number three, the Albemarle Commission, where I sit, also just conducted a review of its annual audit, and it was found, well, a couple of minor suggestions, but essentially an unqualified opinion, which is good, which means the books and records and financials of Albemarle Commission and Local Council of Government are indeed just fine. And lastly, I would just like to say, welcome back, kids. Schools opened today.
How about it? Yep.
Somebody wrote an op-ed back in July of last year saying, boy, we should really look at opening schools. Oh, wait, that was me. I'm glad we got to it. Welcome back, kids. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I reported earlier, the Director for North County DEQ was appointed to head up the National EPA Agency through President Biden. Governor Cooper has named a new Director for Department of Environmental Quality, and she spent time with the Environmental Defense Fund. The past three years, she was Director of Regulatory and Legislative Affairs for the Southeast Climate and Energy, and also past Regional Director for Contact, specializing in stormwater solutions. Ms. Gotti comes very well-qualified in her dealings with environmental issues, and I look forward to working with her, along with, one of her first duties will be to name a Director for North County Marine Fisheries. I would also agree, I've talked to several people about our public hearing of the Avon Beach Nourishment Project, and County Manager, from myself and just about everybody I spoke to, well, I will say, everybody I spoke to, commended you on handling that meeting and your professionalism. And like Commissioner Bateman says, sometimes it's kind of hard, you don't know what question's going to be answered or asked, and you handled it very well, and I thank you for that.
I think we should keep him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Also, for a day in history, in 1875, the very first Civil Rights Act was passed by Congress, and unfortunately, that was actually overturned by the Supreme Court about a year after it was actually passed. Also, in more popular history, if you'll put it that way, this was the day that Charles Lindbergh's baby was kidnapped. And even with that, if you don't know who Charles Lindbergh was, he was the one that flew solo over the Atlantic Ocean, and was, at that time, he was a pop star, big time. The kidnapping actually shocked the nation and disturbed an outrage. Even Al Capone, even while he was in his jail cell, offered his support from his staff in trying to get Charles's baby back. So that was done today in history. So with that, thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Commissioner House. County Manager?
Chairman, I'm going to ask for a closed session. You may want to go to the others first.
Yeah, I will. Did you have anything else before we...
One little brief thing.
Okay. Public Information Officer Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. How about our Finance Director, Mr. Clausen?
Yeah, just actually, four quick things. Public Works last week, Commissioner Tobin changed the roof replacement request in the capital plan, and they've got the Mans Harbor Community Center in for next fiscal year.
Excellent. Take that off of my list. That's great.
Animal shelter, the SPCA starts moving things in on the 9th and starts moving animals in on the 12th. COA is going really well, except for weather, but the exterior, the professional arts building, they'll have an answer and an estimate to us by the end of next week. And I apologize to Bobby, because I haven't talked to him yet, but this happened Friday at Health and Human Services. On the east side of the building, on the first floor, they're uncovering some water damage. So Oakley Collar's taking a look at it this week, and they're going to get a number back to us. I don't know if it's 10,000 or 100, but we're going to look at everything on that side. And that's it.
Right, thank you, thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. County Manager?
Yes, sir. Just one thing, from Dave Peterson's presentation, I'm going to get Dorothy and get him with Sheila to start looking at what we can do to message. He was saying messaging is going to be so important, and we'll try to get our staff working on that to get the word out to our people who need those services so that we can do our part there, too. With that said, we need to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 through 1811A to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege with regard to the Felix matter, and pursuant to NCGS 143 through 1811A5 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by our on behalf of the county in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property in the matter of Mako Mike's and to approve the amendments of the last closed session.
A motion to go into closed sessions, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Good afternoon, and I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order.
In the closed session, the Board approved the minutes of the last closed session. They consulted with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and the Board authorized the County Manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of the Mako Mike property at $1.95 million, and with a closing to occur in October, and to share the cost of the revenue stamps and the transfer taxes, and also to enter, the County Manager to enter into such budget amendments as may be necessary to fund that purchase. I need a motion now, in open session, to that effect, so that I can enter into that contract.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Tobin and the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to the end of our meeting today, and there's, I need a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on March the 15th.
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.